I'm going to call this meeting of the Northwoodby Park and Recreation District Board to order. It is 6:31 on the 18th of April. And present are Commissioners Singleton, Hawley, Fort, and Hoffmeyer. And Commissioner Frosch is absent. Any agenda changes, Commissioner Singleton?
Yes. So signage, I, other items have usurped my district time, so if we can continue that for the main meeting.
Okay.
Please. As well as if I can add Resolution 09-02 to new business.
Resolution 02, 09?
09-02.
09-02. Okay.
That is all, please.
Thank you. Mr. Fort?
Please.
Mr. Hoffmeyer?
Yeah, I have one thing. On the topic of the Enwak contract motion, I think, okay. On the, on the Enwak contract motion, I think all of us, myself included, have talked quite a bit on this. And I think it's time that we listen. I think it's a good time we do it. Looking at the crowd, I wonder if we should extend the, the initial public comment period to one hour?
Um, no, because we have two periods. And so we can listen at the end as well.
I just feel that, given how big what we're looking at is, I feel that maybe after the fact it might be irrelevant what they have to say.
Okay. How do you guys feel about that? Do you wish to entertain extending the half hour to an hour of public comment? So you have 18 people signed up.
So how long is it supposed to be for each?
Each person gets three minutes, but most people don't take the full three minutes. They talk shorter, but, and they are going to be limited to three minutes.
No, I mean, we normally save the half hour, but if you want to do, I don't, I have no problem.
And we would continue, but because they're probably all going to be talking about one of the issues, I agree, agree with Commissioner Hoffmeyer.
Unless you agree to it, I didn't move on. I mean, someone could have given gomorrah.
Very good. Okay. And so you had no agenda changes, really?
That was it.
Okay. Um, okay. Public comments. Public comments are your views only to us. It's not a give and take. You have three minutes. I will be timing. Okay. Mr. Merrill, Sean Merrill. And if you come up here, you probably could be heard better by the recorders.
Go ahead, sorry. My name is Sean Merrill Swinparent, former commissioner, current taxpayer of the district. This evening you will be voting on a motion that has been discussed by you in a special meeting, and the concept of which has been discussed in many different forms and regular meetings for quite a while. Many of the concerned parents have requested open communication with this board to discuss this action, and that is not happening. One commissioner sending three emails and a meeting with one parent and then not providing the request and information is not exactly open communication. You have been asked to provide numbers for which we can consider whether or not we could actually change the way the expenses for the team are paid for. And you have not provided those. As a matter of fact, during your special meeting to discuss the numbers, only Commissioner Fort brought his own numbers, Commissioner Hoffmeyer brought the executive director's numbers. And then the board failed to agree on which numbers to use or not use. You asked for the parents of another, of, or another organization to take over the expenses, yet you can't even define those expenses. You then require a plan to be in place by July or the team will be disbanded. You have failed to provide clear and measurable objectives with a reasonable timeline and with no firm numbers. And you have refused to sit down and discuss this change with the program participants it involves. These same people raised the money to replace lane lines, lane markers, and a new computer for the scoreboard this year. All saving taxpayer money and providing needed updates that are used by many other programs. And you have never even acknowledged this or thanked them. This team brought in over $8,000 during a swim meet that was run with parent volunteers, and not one of you showed up, volunteered, or thanked the coach or team for their efforts. This same meet brought two teams from Canada and three from Washington, whose swimmers and families stayed in local hotels, ate at local restaurants, and contributed to the economies of our community. The value of this program is far reaching and should be well-known to each and every one of you. If the district, which is in its first year in the black for quite a while, is expected to continue to serve the entire community, change will definitely need to occur. That change should be measured, well thought out, planned, and executed jointly with the cooperation of the board, executive director, and those that are involved with the program. Your current motion and the action, or lack of action, at the special meeting in regards to this motion failed to do that on any level. You must not pass this motion, and if you want change, you need to consider how to bring it about in a successful way for the program and the district. Finally, remember that change is a process and not an event. Thanks for listening.
Thank you. Ashley Merrill, please.
My name is Ashley Merrill. I've been on the swim team for eight years now, and it has changed my life. Swimming has taught me valuable leadership skills, determination, dedication, commitment, and teamwork. Over the years, the few teammates that have stayed with me have experienced drastic changes. During this period, I began to learn that change takes time. You cannot rush change. As George Bernard Shaw famously said, "Progress is impossible without change, and those who cannot change their minds cannot change anything." If you commissioners want to change something about this pool and club, you must open your minds to other people and ideas. If you do this, we can work together to come up with an opportunity fit for both tasks, fit for both the taxpayers and the swim team members. Thank you.
Thank you. Lindsay Brown.
My name is Lindsay Brown. I've been on the swim team for four years, and I would like to say some things about the importance of the swim team. Swimming is the only sport that we can participate in year-round and for as many years as we like. The Enwak swim team is the only team, is the only competitive swim team on the island, and had, and I would not be able to make it to any other swim team practices if the Enwak swim team was to shut down. Thank you.
Thank you. Rob Santiago.
Good evening. My name is Rob Santiago. I'm the Chief Petty Officer, United States Navy. My statement is just basically a little bit of story. I came here about a year ago on orders, not by choice. And one of the first things that was a concern to my wife and I was whether my daughter was going to be able to continue the swim program that she was already in, in San Diego here. And as you can imagine, when you did make, you Google Oak Harbor Swim Team, there's not a lot of good things out there, but, but we said, well, let's get there, talk to the pool, talk to whoever's running the program, and see what's going on. At that time, I spoke with the director, I spoke with the coach, and they had an, they indicated that, hey, we're looking at growing, you know, the team to grow, and we have a three-year plan. So based on that, I decided, okay, we're going to live in Oak Harbor and go along with this swim team versus the one in Amocoors. That team seemed to be very big, and we wanted our daughter to have the opportunity to turn around and, and compete. So our choice was based on this swim team to stay here in Oak Harbor. It wasn't because I was near the banks, it wasn't because it was a nicer place to be at, it was because of the swim team, because we thought it would be a better opportunity for our daughter. So I ask you, the board members, to take a look at the motion that's being applied today that, to talk about disbanding the team. I think that some of you here do not really want the Enwak team put away. So I just would ask that everybody take into consideration that the choices being made here affect a lot of people, and those military members that come here, come here with the intention to serve their country and to afford their children an opportunity to do well in all types of programs. And I think by disbanding the Enwak team, you're doing a disservice to the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Gillian Pape.
Hi, I'm Gillian Pape. I've been swimming for nine years, and I'm 17. Nine years ago, I made the decision to join Enwak. For the last half of my life, this team has given me lifelong friendships, a sense of purpose, and the opportunity to sign to a Division One university. The many times I've walked through the front door of this pool are countless, and the familiar phrase, "I can't, I have swim practice," has been a staple in my vocabulary for a long time. The blatant disregard the board shows for the people on this team is disheartening, and it's hard to believe that one day it could all be taken away from us. As the oldest swimmer on the team, I can confidently say that Enwak has given me so much, and I only hope that it will be here for years to come so other kids have the opportunities that I have had swimming on this team. When the team fell apart five years ago, there was a reason that I was one of the only swimmers to stay, a simple love for the sport and a greater goal, to swim in college. Here I am now, a junior in high school, and I'm so close to reaching that goal. If this team is defunded, my dream will no longer be possible, and the same goes for all the swimmers succeeding me. Swimming has given me traits that I will hold on to forever, dedication, commitment, perseverance, and being a team player. The friendships I experienced during my first few years on Enwak are still with me today in school and from different states. Because of Enwak, my best friend is still my best friend, all the way from Arizona. Overall, all I hope is that Enwak will be here for the long haul, as I would not be who I am today without it. Thank you.
Thank you. Carolyn Pape.
Yeah, I'm just going to read mine from here. Much, much of what has been shared already are some of the same sentiments of mine, so I'm going to leave this with Mr. McCaslin, and he can pass this on to you. But I just have a few extra points. My daughter, who took me that statement when I came home from work tonight, I mean, you see the heart and the value of this program in this community, so much more than creating a group of talented swimmers. It creates a pride in the Oak Harbor community. These kids go out for years to come and do amazing things out there in the world. Maybe unrelated to swimming, but this foundation sets them on that path. So just a few of the points. Sean Merrill talked about the three-year commitment that you had made to this team, and here we are, barely a year into that, and we are meeting our commitment. We're making the strides that you asked us to do and heading in the direction that you asked. We are meeting our commitment to you, yet you are going back on your word and not providing us with the time you had stated for us to continue to grow our program. You are failing in the commitment you made publicly to our team. I spoke about the lack of response to our request to engage in dialogue over the last six months about the future of Enwak. And your lack of response to emails, to requests to me, even that no one is looking me in the eye right now, except one commissioner. Please have that courtesy. In your elected roles, you have a responsibility to listen to your constituency, which includes the Enwak families. You cannot make decisions in a vacuum based upon your own personal interests and interests. That perspective is counter to the role of a board member, in which you are bound by law to perform with objectivity and integrity. You have failed to support you reach a consensus on the financial management of the district, one of the key components in your role of governance in preserving the long-term future of the district. The executive director presented a complex financial analysis of the district programs last week, providing a consistent methodology for evaluating the financial health of each program and allocating overhead costs. In spite of this detailed assessment, which would ensure the long-term viability of all the programs under the district umbrella, you have discarded this analysis and instead continue to hold Enwak to a different standard than any of the other programs of the district. Once again, your personal interests and not the betterment of the community continue to drive your decisions, and you deprive the district of the benefits of the executive director you selected, who offers the business acumen needed to sustain the future of the Northwoodby Park and Rec District. As you can see in Resolution 09-02, which was distributed tonight, in the history of the district, the Northwoodby Aquatic Club has been a valued program in the world of the mission of the district.
Time, thank you. Gillian Pape.
Okay, I'm giving my time, John.
The support and interest in ensuring this program remains in our community, available to all of the children of Northwoodby, has never waned. Only under your leadership has the board taken it upon themselves to build this wall between the team and the district and take every opportunity to spread misinformation about the cost of the program to the taxpayers. As a result of the public records requests have demonstrated, your actions have been informed by old allegiances, spurring this interest to end Enwak and Oak Harbor. You have sacrificed this wonderful small-town team because of your own small-town politics. Unfortunately, our children are the ones who pay the price.
Thank you. Rebecca Rhodes.
Hello, my name is Rebecca Rhodes. My daughter's on the swim team. And she, the first board meeting was a special meeting on Thursday, April 6th, after I heard about the proposed motion. My daughter is new to the team, so I'm not familiar with the whole history. I went to the board meeting with an open mind, not knowing what to expect. And some of the feelings I felt after leaving that, and that was what I got from just the commissioners talking, because there was no public speaking at that time. One is I don't feel that you realize how Enwak is a community sport. One of the commissioners compared it to select soccer. Well, as a parent of a select soccer player, we have to go off-island. It is very expensive, so a lot of children don't try out because it is expensive. And there's tryouts. Not everybody makes the team. Enwak is open to everybody. If they can swim the length of pool, they can swim. And it provides great value to the community. Another, and another, I did send an email for the commissioners. I did get two responses, and I do appreciate the responses I received. But one of the responses want to work with us, but they're not sure what it looks like. That concerns me, that you're going to vote on something, yet you don't know what the ramifications are. So I do suggest, please postpone this until you actually know what the ramifications of closing or changing that contract. Thank you.
Thank you. Emma Oakes.
Hi, my name is Emma Oakes, and I'm a swimmer. If we lose our swim team, I will no longer have this sport. In the past year and a half, my skills have improved, and I want to continue working on my goals with this team. Coach Taylor has pushed me farther than I thought I could go, and I don't want to lose him. The people on this team aren't just my teammates, they're my friends, and I want to keep my friends.
Thank you. Dawn Brown.
Hi, my name is Dawn Brown. My daughter is 11 years old and on the swim team. She's an only child, and through this swim team, she has found a sisterhood in Enwak. She has found a family. She has found brothers that she would have never had because of Enwak. Because this meeting was advertised at a time with future path of funding for Enwak would be voted upon, I'd like to state a few facts. Enwak having contributed more than, Enwak families have contributed more than coaches' salary in the district this year. From your 2016 profit and loss statement, total income from Enwak was over $74,000. The total cost of coach with benefits and taxes was about $61,000. That's about $13,000 coming into the district from Enwak families. I recognize that there are other expenses, but let me add to your profit and loss statement that does not reflect the other contributions of the Enwak families in the Booster Club supporting this team. The families have put in thousands of hours of volunteer time. That is to how the Booster Club was able to contribute to the district over $4,000 worth of item, items for the good of the entire pool in its first year. Lane lines, backstroke, flags, computers, exercise equipment, timing and lap counters equipments. These are items that benefit not only Enwak, but Enwak's lap swimmers, high school team swimming, master swimmers. They divide the pool when volleyball wants to be there during the same time as lap swim. When aerobics is going on, it's the same time as lap swim. Additionally, the Booster Club has hosted a swim camp just in 2016, open to all swimmers in our area, as well as participants to TAC. This year, we're opening it up not only to TAC, but to Bellingham as well. Visitors that come to our swim meets, they contribute to our town, they contribute to the town's businesses, they contribute to everything here locally. It is my opinion that this is the one program that truly gives back to the district and the community here at the pool. Thank you.
Thank you. Kyle Coonan.
Hi, my name is Kyle Coonan. I'm 15 years old. About five years ago, I joined Enwak, but due to my dad being in the military, we had to leave. I was on the team for two years, I had a great time. And about six months ago, we moved back here, and I was able to join the team again, which is awesome. Not many things are constant due to moving so much, so I really enjoy having Enwak as a constant area of my life. So unless I dual-enrolled in like Oak Harbor schools, or I paid to play select soccer or something like that, this is the only sport that I can really, I can really do. So it's really nice to have something that I can just come in, I know some people from last time we were here, just swim with them. I learned a lot from Coach Taylor, he's a great coach, really, has really helped me with my technique, which, my goal is to go to the Naval Academy one day. And in order to do so, great athletic achievements are required. And I can't do that without his help and without the team's help. So the only way I can accomplish that is if Enwak is still around for me to take advantage of, and for all the other kids in Oak Harbor and around Oak Harbor. It sounds like Mrs. Brown and the Booster Club are planning on opening up the swim team camp to kids of Elview, and just.
Thank you. Chloe Nix.
I love the Enwak swim team. I've been on it for a while. And it's really fun to do. And sometimes, I didn't have a speech.
You're doing fine.
Yeah, great. Just say what you think.
I like the swim team a lot. And sometimes we do fun things, and I love being able to swim with my friends. I think swimming is kind of my passion. Thank you.
Thank you. Anil Tyson.
My name's Anil Tyson. Father to a daughter that swims on the Enwak swim team. I'm here to discuss the motion that you guys have put forward. Been to many meetings over the past eight or nine months. During that time, I've seen the board discuss its inability to engage the community, and members of the board have repeatedly used the Fidago Pool as an example of fiduciary practices. While this is well-intentioned, I believe it falls well short of the intent of good practices. Fidago Pool doesn't come to these financial or fiduciary decisions out of the blue or just at a commission meeting. They use a series of committees that are staffed with members of the community, that they petition community people to come and sit on, and engage community stakeholders to arrive at recommendations and the way forward that's agreed upon by people that use the pool and community members. Most often, when I've been here watching what's going on at these meetings, it is more often than not that there is blaming and name-calling and kind of bullying going on at this committee of commissioners when they're trying to discuss this, instead of something that could be called a sober, civil discussion about ways forward and things that we need to do to make things better at this pool. Motion presented by Commissioner Hoffmeyer has essentially put the cart before the horse in that manner. Only Commissioner, or I'm sorry, Commissioner, shh, my bad. Only Commissioner Hoffmeyer and Commissioner Fort came to the last meeting with any earnest manner to discuss the subject of the meeting, which was the Enwak financing or Enwak monies. I agree with them that the Enwak team has a place at this pool, which both have stated. I ask that you vote down this motion that you're going to put before yourself today and move forward in a collaborative way for our community, engage our community stakeholders in a sober and civil discussion about the way forward, and think, I think it would be pleasantly surprised about the amount of participation and willingness to forge a positive path forward that you'll find in this community from everybody. And I think that will get you the information and way forward that you'll need in order to make this decision.
Time, thank you. Catherine, please.
I had written, my situation almost exactly mirrors Ms. Rhodes', and I came late to understanding what was going on. I was not with the meetings and politics, and I was ashamed of that. I think, I was going to say, oh, she almost spoke for me, but I think I'd like to add my voice to this, because it's of such impact. I was the one that wrote, I'm a firefighter's wife, stay-at-home mother, and my 11-year-old is not a select soccer, select baseball, select. She is, you know, loves to swim, loves to be the mother. This is her opportunity to do that. And as was said, this is absolutely the opposite of a select team. She was allowed onto a team for the first time, she made it, and has just truly enjoyed her time here. We are certainly not, we can't afford to go off-island, we can't afford really other sports avenues for her. And it has really been integral for years for us to have this, and I just wanted to let you know that this would greatly impact our family. And I was kind of shocked that it was happening, had not heard all of this. So I would ask that you very much consider what is said here tonight, and it's very heartfelt feedback, you can tell by a lot of our voices. Please consider any other option than a quick change, a quick decision on this. I very much ask to consider keeping such a valuable, very diverse, societic, economically and every other way, team that's really, really important to us.
Thank you. Dionne Whitely.
Hi, I'm Dionne Whitely, and I'm the mother of an Enwak swimmer. In the name of fairness, I have a question. How much time has the program review subcommittee spent analyzing the aerobics program or the lap swim program? I can't imagine these programs paying for themselves. Since they don't pay for themselves, why aren't their motions to require a nonprofit group in support of these programs? I suspect that profit is not the primary reason for these particular programs. The primary objective of these programs is promoting good health for those who want or need it. Enwak's objectives are similar in nature. First, the club promotes good health and develops healthy competitiveness. Secondly, the club is producing top-notch, future college-bound swimmers. Thirdly, the club is open to all, just about all, just as the aerobics and lap swim program is open to all. The bottom line, Enwak should be just not for profit, but to benefit anyone who wants to participate. In a word, it benefits the community.
Thank you. Dan Brown.
Commissioner Hawley, I'm going to ask that you give up the egg time and actually pay attention to what gets said here, because I notice you seem to be spending a lot of time staring at your watch when people are talking. So I'm going to give the executive director a watch here that he can watch on, which is on, and you can actually maybe pay attention to what's being said to you during the public comment periods, because I know you've said in previous meetings that no one you've ever heard from has supported the Enwak program, which is odd since I know, over the course of last year, public comments have been made at meetings that you've been listening to, where supporters of the Enwak program have spoken, and yet you claim that no one you've spoken to in this community has supported the Enwak program. The people you speak to only say, "Why are we paying for these kids?" I believe that's a direct quote. A commissioner at the last meeting stated that in her view, a strict constructionist approach to the budget would not work. And she pointed out that a startup program, if you were to think of one, would need some ramp-up time to begin to pay its own way. I'd like to add that a program recovering from a major restructuring should be included in that same group. And the Enwak program has been in recovery mode recently, as it has previously been through the firings and resignations of two coaches and two directors. Stability has only recently returned with the current executive director and Coach Taylor. And a concern- And it can certainly be said that the Booster Club, upon whom so much of this plan seemed to depend, is still in ramp-up mode. Please consider allowing that ramp-up time, which was agreed to last June, and withdraw or vote against the motion for the deadline on the Enwak contract. Finally, I'd like to just quote something that a former director in his resignation letter said, because I think it's appropriate, although he intended it from a different viewpoint. His comments were that he has encouraged the commission to acknowledge and validate the taxpayers' concerns. The commission as a governing body refuses to take even the slightest symbolic measures to do so. And he could not, he says, "I cannot," ethically continue to support this situation when the commission, as a governing body, will not even acknowledge the taxpayers. That was his comments in 2013. I think it applies equally today to the failure of this commission to acknowledge the taxpayers in this room who support the program that they have signed up for at the district, the Enwak program. Thank you.
Thank you. Amy Merkley?
Hello, I'm Amy Merkley, uh, Oak Harbor High School swim coach. And, uh, I've been coaching off and on over the last eight years or so. I can't count very well. But, um, I have really enjoyed, um, working with the swimmers from Enwak. Um, they, we have, on the high school team, we end up with a combination of Enwak swimmers and those just trying to stay in shape for their next sport or just want to try it, see what it's about. And I have been able to witness over the years, um, the Enwak swimmers helping teach the newer swimmers from flip turns to starts to how to be tough and how to really work through the pain. And, um, and also this gives those Enwak swimmers in their own high school, it gives them some prestige. They're good at something and now the high school knows it. They swim for their high school team, they go to states, they're competitive. You know, the, the, you know, not to pick on football players, but the football player that's walking the halls and talks big about joining swim gets out there and realizes it's not easy, it's tough. Um, so, uh, anyway, I, I've really enjoyed working with the Enwak swimmers and it's been a great, um, bond between those who've committed so much of their time, um, have been faced down in that chlorinated... Well, I was a swimmer too, it's horrible, you can't breathe, it's just... But I, I want to see, I would love to see the program continue and to continue to work with the high school, um, team. It's just, it's such a beautiful thing to see those kids working together and bonding and forming friendships, um, outside the pool too. Kind of get some of the other high school kids in the pool. And they end up, some of those high school kids end up going to lap swims and joining Enwak because once they see what swim team's all about. Because we don't have it offered at middle school, so their first chance is freshman swim. Um, and if Enwak goes away, we lose that beautiful, um, bond that I see formed. Um, and, you know, our high school program goes downhill, as I've seen before, with other, I coached another high school that didn't have a club, a team in the area to support it. And, um, just, it wasn't the same. It's, uh, it's a beautiful thing, you know, please do whatever you can to keep it going and, um, work on the relationship with the community, um, the school community and, uh, the club. Thank you.
Thank you. And Steve Hoffmeyer, last but not least.
Hello, Steve Hoffmeyer. So I was walking the week today and I come into the house and I go by Alan's room, my daughter. And I look in and there's a letter jacket saying, uh, "Special living medals for 12 years, ribbons and medals from Enwak." And it hit me, like it always does, how much different life is because of Enwak. You went down to Children's Hospital and you got an hour and a half and you get it given to you that your daughter has newly resurfaced and with an IQ of 65. Here's what you can expect in life. And you buy into that eventually because your heart breaks. And you look around and you try these groups of church. Your kid gets called weird, strange. It's, it's, uh, not included, have ostracized, shoved aside. You try other youth programs and if they can accommodate, they will. You, you try scouts, rural scouts, and eventually that, that doesn't work either. I think you just throw your hands up and think, well, this is, this is how it's going to be. So you pull back, right? You pull back in yourself and you hide away. Except with Alan, we did one thing different. We took a chance on Enwak. We took one chance and it changed the trajectory of her life. Little did we know that she would find a family, that she would find a group of people that would accept her for who she is. They would see the hard work that she put in. More important than that, they would see that when she lost, she smiled. And that's a beautiful thing. And they saw the beauty in the individual. That's what Enwak does. Listen to this lie in this town for 10 years now about the exclusive club. It's the inclusive club, one that the commissioners frankly, and I know you're doing your best job. Please take this to the people, that this club is the most inclusive sports program on this island. It crosses all demographics. It covers all, you know, whether you're able-bodied or disabled-bodied, whether you're black, whether you're white, whether you're rich or whether you're not. It, it, it reaches all these kids. And the one common thread that we find is it's hard work and it's discipline. Enwak's a beautiful program that you should be proud of. And I would say this, four and a half years ago, things changed. There was a, there was a swim coach that was fired and a lot of things happened. There were some positive things that happened with Enwak that you could also take to the people. Scholarships, there are no more scholarships, people pay. For assistant coaches that you're not responsible for any longer, that's financially sound. Two fee increases that I know that I can remember. One of the last ones was very significant, which included a travel fund. So no longer is the swim coach being paid to travel by the taxpayer. Booster clubs have put in...
Time, thank you.
I'd like to ask to allow Commissioner Hoffmeyer, the ex-commissioner, to finish this statement.
No, we had three minutes. You may leave. You may leave, Mr. Brown, if you're going to... No, you may leave. You may leave the room.
I want him to speak.
He spoke, he has... No. Recess the meeting. I am recessing the meeting. We'll return in five minutes. Calling the meeting back to order, 7:13 PM. Next item on the agenda is public comments. Oh, but, sorry, not public comments, board issues. Um, and I'm going to start. You're here as guests, you will behave yourselves. If you don't, we will eject you. If you won't be ejected, the sheriff's called. So you need to now be quiet and listen. If you don't like what's being said, then just leave, please. You can leave, you can take notes, but don't make noise. We're trying to do the business of the people. Thank you. Commissioner Hoffmeyer?
No.
Commissioner Fort?
Yes. On my way to this meeting, I drove past a number of parks where youth were playing baseball and soccer with volunteer coaches. I feel the swim coach who only works for the swim teams should be hired and paid for by the swim team and not by, not be a North Woodby Park and Recreation District employee. Seventy-five percent of his expense this year by the ED calculation coming from the North Woodby Park and Recreation District MNO levy. The swim team can continue to operate like all other North Woodby non-high schools, sports, non-select teams with volunteer parents and coaches. The history is that this has been going on for four years. The swim team parents are not the only district taxpayers.
Done?
Done.
Commissioner Shinkleton? Okay, so did you not understand we're in board issues? Did you want to say something?
I thought we were in board issues, I didn't think we were in board comments. I was...
Well, sorry, sorry. There's board issues and then there's final board comments at the end. But, so...
It's fine, I'll hold on for when we get onto the topic.
We have no minutes for approval. I wouldn't mind, Commissioner Hoffmeyer, we really, really need those ones for November. And Commissioner Frasch, who's not here, if you ever listen to these minutes, Commissioner Frasch, we really need those missing minutes for November. Voucher review, please. Does anyone have a motion on the vouchers?
Okay, yes, okay. I move, we approve district vouchers 7495 through 7521 in the amount of $23,016.30. And payroll transfers from MNO account to payroll account of $41,857.73 for a total of $64,874.03.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's moved and seconded that we approve expense vouchers 7495 to 7521 in the amount of $23,016.30. Payroll transfer, uh, in the amount of $41,807.73 for a total of, what's the total, 64?
64, 874.
64, 874.
Point oh three.
And three cents. Uh, discussion.
Go around or just...
Sorry, Commissioner Shinkleton, do you have anything?
Um, the only questions I have, um, are technically, um, let's see. So, Kath, I just had a question about, um, so on the Treasurers Report, it has, uh, it has names, uh, of employees blacked out. Why is that?
Because it was an error, it, it, those are patrons. They are patrons, it was, when she wrote it, she wrote wrong.
Okay, so we're sure about that? Okay.
Yes, she counseled me on that before tonight.
Okay. Um, and then the other, uh, just the other question, looking again through the Treasurers Report, is, is, what's our, what's our plan for paying back the... We, we know that we had to make the, the transfer from reserves. What's our plan for paying it back?
When we get the levy dispersment like last year, the major one.
In...
In, in next month.
Okay. All right, those are my questions. Oh, actually, sorry, but, are, does this include the P and L?
Yeah, go ahead.
I just had a few questions about the P and L, but I can come back to that if anyone has other questions.
I had a question, the accountability audit, the 772, did, is that in addition? Didn't we pay some or was that, didn't we pay a bunch and was this extra? I didn't really understand why. We had another...
That was the final, that was the final part of the bill.
Oh, okay, so, all right. Thank you. That was all that I had. Do you have anything? Commissioner Hoffmeyer? Okay, ask your question about the P and L.
Okay, so just a, a couple of things with the P and L. Um, I, I just had a question about the revenue related to school groups. Are we, are we done for the year with school groups? It's, it's, it's high, which is good if we're not, if, do we still have more programs at the school?
Well, they're finishing up, I think they are, I think this is their last class right now. Yes. Unless they, unless they do some in the fall, which I'm always working to try to get them to do in the fall.
Okay, nothing planned right now, but maybe we do it, okay. All right. Just a note on, and, and I, I know I notice these things sporadically, but there's, in the expenses, there's a major equipment purchase and, um, it just seems strangely titled since it's only a $500 budget item. I, I realize I could have saved that for some other time, but I wouldn't consider that major, more than likely. But I, I don't know if it has a better potential title. The security system expense, uh, is there something amiss with that? Or is that, are we expecting that that one is close to done for the year as well?
We pay a yearly fee to them, but we also have a, um, a sensor that kept going bad.
Okay.
And so they had to come out and fix that.
Okay, so we have an unexpected...
Yes.
Yeah, it might be nice, I mean, eventually it might be nice for us to see those things broken up separately, just so that we understand the intended versus the, um, unexpected stuff. But, uh, just for future reference, um, the spa boiler, um, are we, is that, have we checked that that's all finding good? Um, the expense was, sorry. I wrote them on a separate piece of paper. So we're already at like 40% for the year. Do we know if there's anything up with that or...
Well, that's, uh, as we discussed before, that's just one of those things that we never know what they're gonna, what it's gonna do.
Yeah, I guess I would expect the other boiler to be in a similar fashion, so, I guess. Maybe that's inaccurate, but, okay. It's, it's just starting at 40%, so I guess chances are that we have to revise that. And then just the intergovernmental other, um, I'm just going to request again that we break that out.
She did that already, it's just not on this.
Okay.
But you'll see it going forward.
Okay, great. That was it, thank you.
Sorry, I'm running. Committee of Princes, Clover Valley Committee?
We have a question last week in a meeting.
Program Review Committee has not met. And Levy Committee, did you want to talk about our meeting yesterday?
Well, I didn't, you didn't bring that proposal, did you? That you had sent us? Because we're still, I guess we're still wanting to get some, uh, authorization from our legal opinion from, yeah. So basically, we're, we're about ready to present to the, uh, board the proposal for the, uh, upcoming levy. And, and we pretty much agreed on it. We're just sending it to, uh, the county attorney and let him peruse it and make sure that we don't mess up anything. I guess South Woodby kind of messed up and now they're not able to get their 1% raise annually, so we want to make sure we don't mess that up. So the ED is taking care of that.
So we have to have it to the board next month for approval. And way early, but it's, let's do it early in case we have any issues with it.
Have we, um, if I can ask a question? I had asked you a question, and it was just yesterday, but about if, if for whatever reason we were pushed over into February, would we get paid in February? Or would we get paid in 2018 or would that extend?
No, I'm pretty sure, I think the answer is we won't. If we do it in February, we don't get paid until 20, the following year, 2019.
Okay, so I, I would just ask that we, we heavily consider, uh, I, I, I'm, I'm not trying to undo the, the good works and discussions of anyone. I don't, that is not my intention. It's just understanding that maybe a, a different failsafe. I mean, un- understanding the, the ramifications of, of each strategy. Um, and, and that has me concerned, which if, if we wanted to go, if, if we wanted to go in August, um, that last date of September is May 12.
Yes.
And, and I just want us to be cognizant of that because if we miss it, we miss it. And, um, there could be, there could be large repercussions to that.
Right, there was one other wrinkle that came up at the last, our levy meeting that we hadn't considered. It's apparently, uh, that we have to, the reason things don't pass sometimes, like I think probably from previous August meetings, is that we have to have 40% of the voters from the last November election show up for the, and they tend to not show up in August. And so things tend to fail based on the fact that we don't get the 40%, so...
I was going to go actually down to the county and talk to, um, what's her name?
The auditor?
Yes. The auditor.
Um, Sheila Crater.
Thank you. Sheila, sorry. Um, I'm going to go talk to Sheila and see if she has the data on, did they fail because they didn't get enough positive votes or they failed because we didn't have enough actual votes in August? So I will, I will confirm that if I find out that it's because they didn't have enough...
That's good to...
You know, that may, that may be a point that we need to consider. So I will find that out this week, if she's not on vacation. And, um, we'll get back to everybody and then we might need to have a special meeting to talk about specifically when to time our try on the levy, if that works for everybody, okay? All right, so that's action to me. See Sheila. Okay, action to my review, Mr. Executive Director, please.
Okay. First one, uh, is about the employee advisory program that we have. Uh, the employees were polled and I had zero, I mean, zero interest from any employee that they would use the program. So, um, I guess when it comes time to renew, we can talk to the people that we purchase it through and just tell them we're not renewing the contract. If that's, at least that's the way I read the results of, of what I... Okay, uh, the next one was to look into cost of the ceiling, the roof. You'll see some, you'll see that in my, um, I forget if it's in the maintenance or the, or my report. I think it's in my report. Matt discovered that it's about, to do the ceiling while we wait for something else, it'd be about 40 gallon, $40 a gallon for, to use a spray method to put it down there. So now... And so now the thing he's working on now is how many gallons does he think he's gonna need for that. Still waiting on, on the information from Commissioner Frosch for the letter of appreciation to Leschwa. The insurance coverage, our broker will work on that this summer, so that one's still gonna be an open item. The branch, as far as going back to Woodby Bank on how we get a loan if needed, the branch manager's checking on a couple of things, so she'll get back to me hopefully within the next couple of weeks on what she finds out and then we'll figure out what our path of what there is. As I, I think I put this in the last month's thing, Matt will be going to the CPO, his refresher course this week, actually, instead of in the fall, because he, because Seska, one of our, one of our suppliers, offers the course and it was way cheaper than going to, I think like a hundred, $150 cheaper than going down to Seattle in the fall. So that is the action item. The action item was check, inquiring about the ozinator and all. So he's gonna check on that and come back with the answer. The next one, are the meeting minutes getting up there? It was for the November 15th regular, December 15 regular and any of the meeting minutes from '16 and '17. I believe I sent you all an email with the meetings were outstanding and actually they're on the, they're all on the thing here, other than tonight's. So all of those, we have, we got Commissioner Fort's from the rewrite from the January meeting and they're up, so we're just waiting on, on the rest of them. So they're all good to go there. Both versions of the pool schedule are on the website as you asked, so they're up. We did move the port-a-potty into professional services. That was a last minute catch, but that's why you got two P and Ls on that one. And then we, what you would, and you will see this on the next one, Joanne did break, put more clarity, meaning more line items under, under government, so you know what it all contains in there, instead of just one more sum of orders, so you'll have better transparency.
Okay.
That's it for action items.
Did you bring up, did you just mention about the bank?
Yes.
Trying to get the, okay, yeah, because I had brought this up the last meeting and thinking it was a really kind of an urgent thing, but as, as our review, now that you've given us the four counts, I can see that we have like $93,000 as of March 31st at a spot look, but that should still be getting us through the month of April and
Potentially.
In the four counts.
Yeah.
Yeah, barring nothing, I mean usually, I mean if you look at our, we usually come out to $60,000 to $70,000 each time, or maybe, occasionally, yeah, like in December it's a lot more because we pay the $60,000 for insurance, but neglecting that, it's usually $60,000 or $70,000 a month, which is the reason I like to see these things, because I can just sort of look ahead and say, okay, we're not gonna, so I think we're going to make it, so it's probably is not as urgent now that we get that, look at that loan, we still should look at it for future breakdowns and so on and so forth.
I will, and if we have to hit the reserve for payroll
Oh, yeah, I think you might have to hit it again, but I just don't think we're gonna.
It won't be like the normal amount this time here. That's our.
We're not going to, we're not gonna go bankrupt.
Oh, no.
Yeah, thanks.
I won't need a loan to cover it.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, done?
Done.
Thank you. Okay, unfinished business, an NWA contract motion. Mr. Shing.
Madam Chair, I withdraw my previous NWA contract proposal motion.
Can you speak up, please?
I said I withdraw, I withdraw the motion. Madam Chair.
Yes.
I move that the executive director present to the board at the May regular meeting, proposal alternatives for making the North Woodby Aquatic Club and Masters Program revenue neutral or an independent entity effective September 1st, 2017. The plans must include all program expenses, including staff-related expenses.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, do I have to read it? Give me the, give me the wording later, thank you. It's been moved and seconded that the executive director present to the board, she said.
At the May meeting.
At the May meeting.
Alternatives.
Okay, discussion, Commissioner Shingleton.
So I have long considered both sides of this discussion. I've done numerous hours of research and number crunching. I've talked to members of our community and for over two and a half years in this position, I hoped that a low-impact win-win solution would present itself. I would love to see a solution that allows everyone's needs to be met and I'm hopeful this motion will provide solutions to achieve that. But I do believe the district must focus itself on activities that promote its sustainability. One only needs to look around to other pools and recreation districts in this state to see that success is not a given. Many communities struggle with the financial viability of a community pool. Our rural island location makes the viability of our own pool all the more compelling. The district has come a long way in the past couple of years, but we must recognize that we are currently underserving our community and in a position to correct it. We lament our inability to make necessary fixes or to build our reserves to a healthy operating level that give the district security. Outside of other alternatives, we are left to make difficult choices we may not enjoy making. My votes on this issue are not personal, although I recognize the impact may be personal to some. None of you know my journey and I make no assumptions or judgments about yours. I wish the same could be said of those whose insults and accusations, sometimes of a personal nature, are not only cruel but create an adversarial relationship which helps no one. This behavior is an affront to the very concept of community recreation. And for those who pledge their support to the team, I would ask you to do exactly that and help be part of the future solution. And when it is needed, donate with your dollars and your time to help them succeed. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Ford?
Nothing.
Commissioner Hoffmeyer?
Could you read your motion one more time?
It is to, I surely will. And I apologize, I, I, I didn't have time. I move that the executive director present to the board at the May regular meeting, proposal alternatives, sorry I'm out of the track, for making the North Woodby Aquatic Club and Masters Program revenue neutral or an independent entity effective September 1st of this year. The plans must include all program expenses, including staff-related expenses.
You know, I would have a much easier time supporting something like that if the deadline was out further. I just, I think this is much better than the alternative, but I don't feel like that's necessarily enough time to let the director do his job and do what he needs to do. If there was a way to extend that, you know, out, you know, if we could push that out nine months or something, then I would, I would have an easier time supporting it personally. But I do think it's an improvement. That's all I have.
Okay. This is not personal for me either. I, I just happen to think we need to support the facilities of this district and we don't have money for the needed maintenance that's coming down the pipe because it was ignored for way too long. I feel the pain, okay, I hear the pain from all the little children. I am sorry, but I hope that there comes a plan so you can still swim and compete here. This doesn't mean your NWA is totally gone, it just means we have to figure out a way for it to be paid for or changed so that it can be paid for. That's all. And we've been talking about it for a long time. If the parents did not see the writing on the wall, you were not looking. And it's been talked about for years. And it's time for the people of this whole district to be recognized, not just the 50. All right, so, let me see the writing, the words. It's been moved and seconded that the executive director present to the board at the May regular meeting, proposal alternatives for making the North Woodby Aquatic Club and Masters Program revenue neutral or an independent entity effective September 1st, 2017. Plans must include all program expenses, including staff-related expenses. All members in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All members opposed signify by saying nay.
Nay.
And the chair is in favor, it's three ayes, one nay. And I will, because we have to, Commissioner Shingleton, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Ford, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Hoffmeyer, how do you vote?
No.
And Commissioner Hoff, or Holly votes aye. It passes. Okay, next, running club update.
Okay, so the update on that, from the last time, it was, it was really, the advertising's out there and the coach has gone, has completed a child safe course and has taken that cardiac training course for coaches. So that has been done.
Child safe and what was the other one, sorry?
The cardiac training course
Okay.
For, for coaches. So the next step now is to make her an employee of the district and then run a background check on her, which I don't foresee any issue with her on a background check. And then hopefully we get enough people to start this particular session, or we fall back like we talked about and shoot for one, the one in the summer, late summer, as the one to go that might give us more time to get the word out there than what we've done now. By now she's met, she, I've answered the concerns that the commission brought up at the last meeting. She has completed the courses and I have the certificates.
Okay, anyway, Commissioner Shingleton, do you have any questions? Any questions? Okay, moving on, employee handbook.
Okay. Can we do that one?
Yeah.
So in your, in the, in your folder there, which I'll take back at the end, is a draft of the handbook. Commissioner Holly and I didn't get a chance to circle back on it with all the other stuff that's been going on here. So, but here's what I'm asking of you. If you can go through there and make, and give inputs and get the inputs back to me by May 12th, that's probably, that's three weeks, a little over three weeks. And I'd like to just send them to me, however you wanna do it, you can send them to me and then I can put them together and then be ready to address those at the May meeting. I would appreciate that. It would, it'll help me, I'm having my staff make one more run through it too, so I'll probably have some more stuff there. And hopefully at the May meeting, if it's not ready for prime time, at least we've got everything discussed and we can look and go prime time in the June meeting if we're not quite, if we haven't resolved everything that we, from the inputs.
So will we see the inputs? I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
No, that's okay. Ask.
Sorry, I've just, oh, will we see all the other inputs? I mean, what, what is that process like?
Yes, yes, because I'll present them like I've, like on a Q1 review type of thing. I will present, these are, these are the issues that were brought to me and this, this is the resolution or the comments or whatever.
Are we gonna get those in advance of the meeting, though?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
I'm sorry, yes, if I misinterpreted.
I'm not leaving, it's cold.
Okay.
We can close that door back there. Is the meeting over?
No, no, sir, but the, most of the, most of this stuff is now perfunctory stuff that's probably not as entertaining.
Everybody left and I didn't know whether, did everybody say when the meeting was adjourned?
Yeah, no, we still have a lot of, the rest of old, unfinished business, new business, staff reports, but it's
May, I'll make a suggestion.
You may, sir.
Hey, you're talking among yourselves and the people are talking here and I can't hear what you're saying. I mean, I didn't hear a third of what was said today. Now, maybe it's, it's probably my fault for a certain extent, but you need to do something about the acoustics or get microphones or something.
Okay.
Yes, sir. If, if you go onto the website, you can go onto YouTube and you can actually listen to this.
Oh, you can?
Yeah, it has a recorded thing, so you can re-listen to it and, and sort of entertain yourself tonight.
It won't be tomorrow, it won't be tonight, it'll be tomorrow.
Oh, that's all right, it takes a couple of days to get put on there, so, I'm sorry, I take that back. So anyway, in about two or three days, go to the North Woodby Parks and Recreation, could you tell them how to navigate that? It's a little hard to navigate, you have to go to North Woodby Parks and Recreation District and go to
You go to the commissioner page.
It's all the way on the right. Click on that, go to minutes, click on that, and then you'll see on the minutes, you'll see the YouTube site there and you just click on that and you'll go to the YouTube site and you just click on and listen to the YouTube recording.
Sir, if you just come by the pool tomorrow sometime or sometime this week, I can show you how to get to it. If it's already up, I can even just give you the link to it.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, may I leave?
I thought, I thought I talked pretty loud, but maybe not loud enough.
Okay, employee handbook. Anyone have any other questions on the employee handbook?
What's your preferred method of giving the feedback? I mean, what, what works best for you? Is it online or is it?
No, it's, wait, I'm sorry.
Or markup?
You can markup and bring it to me, or you can shoot an email, you don't have to create a document, just shoot an email and go, section 8 dot 1, here's my input or question or whatever like that, shoot it to me. Either way, I don't, whichever is easiest for you.
Okay, okay, thank you.
And what's really important for us to give him is not the typeos, although I know that I will delight in those, but the, you know, if you have a hard, especially a hard issue with how something is worded or why are we even talking about this or why is there this long section on sexual harassment and, anyway, so that's what you wanna focus on.
Do we, sorry, a little point of the folder, do we have the voucher sheet?
Oh, sorry, thank you. I always forget to send that around. Okay, employee handbook, we talked about levy coverage discussion. What was that?
I, I, I think so.
Yeah, that's what I thought, yeah, because it confuses me too, confused me at the last meeting. It's usually about programs and
So the extension of the conversation at the last, at this special meeting.
Thank you for bringing this, by the way.
Absolutely, absolutely. I, my apologies for not having it sooner, but this, there are two documents. And the one that said proposed overhead at the top would be the first one. And so this was, I, I, I'm assuming I didn't just go ahead.
Yes, please.
Okay, I'm sorry, I just
I thought I nodded at you, but
Oh, you may have. So the, at our last meeting, part of, one of the things that I had said was that for me, I couldn't, I couldn't see the path, that it hadn't made, it hadn't made concrete sense to me. And, and so I went back and took another, I had said I wanted to look at it in relation to the P and L, and so that's why I did it this way, because for me that, it made a lot more sense to apply to what we're talking about. And so what I did was went through, I went through and tried to categorize what I saw as an overhead expense versus a program expense and, and then tried to even call out where it likely belonged. I, I'm not saying it's perfect, but the reason why for me that I like this is because I believe that it's easy to understand. I believe not only from our perspective, but from a taxpayer's perspective, as well as from a patron's perspective as to why do I pay what I pay? Because it's, it's, I think it's pretty straightforward. And so if you, I mean, feel free to, and again, I, you know, my apologies at the, at the late of this, it just, there hasn't been a lot of time. But I knew that it was something that was pending or, and that is important. And so I don't know if we want to go through them. Line by line? How do you wanna do this?
Yeah, that's what I intended to do last meeting and I, and I agree, this is much better than mine because it's, it puts numbers to something and I didn't, so, and again, I'm not the counsel, but again, I, for the most part, I, I like it. There were some, yeah, so you'd probably have to go through line by line for me to find out where I, see, actually, I'd need to, actually I'd probably need to review it and then go line by line. I think everybody should have a chance to review it because it's a lot to absorb. So I would think, that's, that's why I sort of asked last time that we get it before the meeting and give people a chance to
I, I understand that, but the, the problem with that approach, and, and I don't know that there's a lot of value in us going, continuing to go back, but I, I don't know that that approach, five people bringing five methods, is kind of just then a weird potluck where you don't end up resolving things.
Well, but if we'd gotten it over the internet and we'd all had a chance to spend a week or two looking at everybody's other proposal, we could have put something together.
So let's focus on how now to move forward. And so my suggestion, if it's okay, is that this not wait until the May regular meeting.
Do you want 15 minutes to review it? Can you do that? Does 15 minutes enough time?
I, I would just say, I mean, if we think that there's potential that you have in a special meeting anyway for the levy stuff, that there's a possibility, can we just do, can we just do this then?
Oh, okay.
And that would be my suggestion, I don't know how everyone else feels, of course.
Um, yes, Commissioner Hoffmeyer?
My, my personal thought on it is, I think the executive director that gets paid to do his job has spent probably close to a couple of decades in the business world understanding this type of thing. understanding this type of thing. I, I think it's his job to decide what is what when it comes to all this. I think this is, this is far overstepping policy. This is wading so deep into the data of operations and I, I don't know that if I had 20 years to look over this, if I would comprehend this as well as the executive director does. And that's my thoughts on it.
Okay. Um, I think maybe it would be a good idea then if we go ahead and schedule a, a special meeting to talk about this. I guess have your calendars.
And if I, if I may, just before, so, so there are two, there are two documents here.
Right.
And one of them is definition of overhead versus program expenses. The other one is because that was specifically requested, it's, it's an intention at defining NWAQ program expenses specifically.
Yes.
Because that was requested and, and, and I'm certain that there probably have been variations defined and this would.
I would think the sooner we do this, the easier it's going to be on the executive director who we're requiring to bring a plan to us on the 25th of May that needs this information. If it's different than, than what he has proposed and it, I believe that it is, so.
Give him time to review it too.
Yeah. So when do you guys want to meet to talk, to go over this? Today is the 18th of April.
Why do we have an executive director?
I think.
To do the day-to-day running of it?
We need to understand some of the economics of this pool and not lead it blindly to the executive director without questioning.
We're in the black for the first time in decades.
Yes, because we started questioning. And we put input into him.
Can we, can we schedule the meeting?
Yeah, we're scheduling a meeting now, so. It looks good for you guys. Do you want to, how long do you want, Commissioner Ford, how long do you want to review these? And, so how long do you?
I only need a few days.
Okay. How about, do you want to do it early next week, like a week from tonight, on the 25th of April?
That'd be fine for me.
I'm busy.
Okay, when are you not busy? You have your kids baseball?
Yeah, I'm coach everything other than that, so I go simple.
Okay.
You're the, you're the coach on your team?
All right. He is available on Monday night or Wednesday or Thursday night. I can't do Thursday. Do you want to do Wednesday, the 26th?
It's fine by me.
Does that work? Okay. Thank you.
Six thirty?
Yeah, six thirty.
Is that okay with you Shane?
Next Wednesday.
Yeah.
Sorry, what's the date?
The 26th.
Manager.
Yes.
Also, would you know by then whether or not the, would you be prepared?
Yes, I'll be prepared. I'll, I'll make sure I talk to Sheila. So we'll talk, we'll talk the levy scheduling and we're going to continue the discussion on levy coverage discussion. So levy scheduling and levy coverage.
Those are the two topics for that night.
Yes. Do we need any other topics? No? Okay. All right, moving on, new business, comprehensive maintenance plan.
Okay, Commissioner, this could basically be the same as the employee handbook. The, there's a map that says a lot of time walking around, little bit stuff and putting together a comprehensive maintenance plan here. But, so it's basically, I'm asking for the same thing except give me a look at all of this. It's, it is very thorough, it's a very thorough list. There's a lot of data in there though that either we can't find anywhere or it's just not, no one knows. I mean, there, there's stuff in there that goes back a long time, so, but everywhere we could find something, we could. Of course, this will give us a little bit more time. So, other thing in there, future, when you see prices to replace, that's a guess. That's just a guess. You know, taking, if it's a dollar a day, is it a dollar twenty whenever it comes up? So those are guesses in there, but our intent is to review this every two years as part of the procedure, so those things could be updated. So what I'm asking is the same with the employee handbook, go through it and comments that you have or anything, get back to us. Now, this one by May 19th, another week. It's a shorter document, so you could probably get through it briefly. It's only 30 pages, whereas the other one's 100 pages. And then we, Matt and I, Matt will be at that meeting and then we will both address all the questions that everyone has on that and then we'll move forward from there. But I think that will expedite the discussion and still allow for any pop-up questions that you come up with during there, so.
And we can send you.
Yes. Yeah, if you send me your inputs, no later than the 19th of May.
I mean, for another point.
I have to wear jeans a lot.
Okay. Any questions about the maintenance plan?
Not right now.
I mean, okay. Employee advisory service, which you answered.
I answered that in the last minute.
Does anyone have any questions or comments on the employee advisory service? That's the one that, remember, he said that the employees were not interested.
I think it's, I think it's good to know that all the employees write the second or some mental health and feel like they don't need that, but given, given the rather negligible cost, I would be in favor of keeping it.
Okay. We're going to talk about it in the, is it the May meeting or the June meeting? We have to, we have to decide because that's when it's time to renew.
If it renews, I believe in June, this was, this was basically the discussion.
Oh, okay.
For, I mean, so I, I had zero employees, senior staff, or down to the people that worked for those department heads, not one came back and said they were interested or felt that they would use it.
And it sounded like even in the past when somebody called in, they didn't get exactly, they didn't get psychiatric counseling or anything like that. They didn't get anything comprehensive and so I just don't know how much value this thing has.
What they, what they, you can call, you can call about anything. You can call if your dog is, you know, my dog's died and, you know, you can call about anything. There are, there is, it's covered in the cost are three visits with a counselor if you choose to go that route, but beyond that, then it becomes the person who has to foot it or their insurance has to take it from there.
And how much was it? It was like for 15 people?
Oh, I knew you were going to ask that. I didn't do it, but if.
It's a.
Yeah, I, I don't remember, I don't remember.
It seems like it was, depending on how many people, it was, but it was like $150 or.
I, I don't recall. I, I think I, I probably agree with Commissioner Hoffmeyer in that if we're unsure that we can just retain it, I, I, the thing I would ask is if we decide to discontinue it, because I, I guess the thing is, is I don't see people looking at it and saying, yeah, I'm probably going to use that. You know, I mean, that you don't, you don't plan a crisis and, and, you know, ahead of time most, in most cases. But my, my only request would be if, if for whatever reason we decide to get rid of it, that we have an understanding of what our plan would be if we had an employee in crisis and how to help that person.
Is this pretty universally used by every other?
It's not, it's not, it's not law to use this. You don't, you don't have to use this program.
Yeah, so that's why I wondered how many other district or.
Well, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't pull some, you could, you could set it up for a small handful of people. I mean.
If you work for the city, Shane, do you have any?
I, the housing authorities, they don't entity, kind of, it's kind of an entity of high, if you will, funding wise. We're able to buy into Washington employers though. We've got coverage there, same same though, I think. Covers employee, not, not the family. I think it's three visits, same as that.
You don't have any part-time workers in the summer?
We don't, no. I would kind of, kind of second what, exactly what Wendy was saying though. I mean, I'm in favor of keeping it. That said, if the director felt it needed to go, I, I would allow that to be his call. But if it was to go away, I would want to know that we replaced it with some policy or procedure that was better.
How about we continue this discussion next month with Mr. Executive Director come to us with a plan to replace it, or here's what it's going to cost and how many people are covered. I seem to remember you saying that it was like we could sign up and we don't even have to give them names, so it's like it could be, you know, you say we're going to do it for this many people.
I know who the three people are.
And then when somebody needs it, then they can be person number one or.
And it might be, it might be that there's, you know, I've seen pamphlets and stuff around. It might be that there's some nonprofit around on the island that handles that type of thing, maybe. I'm not sure.
So see if there's an alternative to this that would provide the same kind of service if you would.
Yes, ma'am.
So.
It's great for $50, I guess. It's not, it's sort of not.
I mean, I call them after commission meetings a lot.
Spend all his time on this. $150 is probably a big language.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll look.
So we will talk about this again then next time in May. Q1 budget review date.
So, yeah, we owe you guys a Q1 review, but we've been busy with a lot of other things that have come in here, but I didn't want you to think we've forgotten about it. I think it's important. I've got two proposed dates from the staff in order of preference.
Okay.
Because I do have, I do have a few of my staff at those, as you recall. So, so we're meeting next Wednesday, so this will be the following Wednesday and May 3rd. And we're asking for 1800, so six o'clock for.
What's this?
On, this is for the budget review for quarter, first quarter?
First quarter.
It'll be on the 3rd, Wednesday, the 3rd, so.
May 3rd or May 10th. Either one of those, we prefer the 3rd, but both are options if that's what it takes.
Wendy, do you have any idea?
I think the 3rd would be.
Better for you?
Well, I, either one is fine for me.
Okay.
Either one is fine for me.
And how's your?
The 3rd works, the 10th though.
Okay, let's, and is the 3rd one for you?
Yeah, so it's 1830.
1800.
We don't start sick, because I've got one employee who's, has a deployed house manager, so we'll get home quick. This shouldn't be a long meeting anyway, so we call these, don't last more than about an hour anyway.
Okay, so, May 3rd.
Sorry. No, no, I was, could we get, so, so the way that we've been doing those, there's like a red, yellow, green, that is, I would call it a subjective evaluation. Can, can we get two columns there and one would be whatever the criteria is, but one would be objective and the other one would be subjective? And it's, I mean, I, I don't want you to take away what you put in there, but, but typically when you do those sorts of things, you, you give an evaluation that's based on, you know, these are, these are my limits. And so it's red, yellow or green based on this. However, the staff evaluation might be different. And, and so it just allows us to see, I'm, I'm happy to explain more one-on-one, but.
I would probably ask for that because it, because you, I, I, when I do them, if I have something that I think is green, even though it might seem outside of the norm, it's green for, and I explain that why it is, but I, I've, yeah, if we can do one-on-one.
Okay. Yeah. And I don't, and I'm not trying to take away from, from that contribution because that's really the meat of the discussion, but it's kind of a, if you took a P and L and you took these things and put them together, it wouldn't, it would be like, I, that doesn't make sense. And so this is, this is the, well, this is the objective evaluation of it. Again, we can talk about offline, but I just, it's, it's for, it's for a purpose and, and so I think it would just enhance the discussion a little bit as well. Thanks.
And I agree that I would like to see the two colors where it's like within, you know, I want to see what your view is and why, but I do like to see, because I remember the last time we had it and there were all these greens and it's like, but this is, should be red. And you had a good reason for why it was green, but I still, I need to see where the red is, just for me. If that makes sense. Okay, any other questions or comments on the budget review date? Okay. Finally, the resolution 0902. Commissioner Singleton.
I'm Chair. I move that we rescind Northwoodby Park and Recreation District Board Resolution 09-02.
Do we have a copy of that?
We received a copy and, you know.
That was what it was.
Okay, I didn't read it.
I second.
Thanks.
Oops, sorry.
This one, it doesn't have a number on there.
That, no, that's not.
That's not it? Oh, that's, this one, oh, tonight, I'm sorry, I didn't have.
Here's Commissioner Ford.
Okay, it's a move that resolution 0, the resolution 0902 be rescinded? Be rescinded. Do I have a second?
He did, he.
Oh, did you second it? Sorry.
I did.
Sorry, Mr. Discussion, Commissioner Singleton.
I just, I think that it's, I think that it's unnecessary and I think that there are things about it that are, that make me uncomfortable. I, I think that if we are managing to our, to our mission and our, and our goals and our values, then, then something like this shouldn't, specific shouldn't be necessary.
Okay, Commissioner Ford?
No comments.
Commissioner Hoffmeyer?
Yeah, I think, I just, I, I'm, I'm rather troubled to see that I think we're just going out of our way to, to go against what has worked for 34 years. And I, I don't understand. You know, the pool was opened in 1983, NWAQ was to follow in 1984. This resolution here that we're wishing to rescind was in place two years before the last MNO passed. You know, if, if you look at the plaques up in the pool, this is what you will see in regards to John Vanderzick. John Vanderzick was born in Oak Harbor and spent his lifetime making the community a better place in which to live. He was the catalyst and the foundation of a number of successful businesses, was a devoted family man and vitally, and vitally interested in sports programs for our youth and was known as Mr. Oak Harbor throughout the entire Pacific Northwest and the state of Washington. John was also an active rotatorian, a charter member of the Oak Harbor Rotary Club with perfect attendance for more than 40 years and served as a district governor for District Number 504. Known as Mr. Rotary, it can truly be said that service above all self was a, was a precept of his life. In John's memory, the Oak Harbor Rotary Club was the moving force and making the swimming pool complex a reality. So, you know, I just, I, I look at this resolution here and I just, I don't, I don't see the need to change it. You know, it's real short, it's three or four sentences, so, you know, whereas the Northwoodby Park and Recreation District, NWPRD, is responsible for providing programs for the community and, so I, I just, I don't see any problems with that line. You know, the next one, the Northwoodby Park and Recreation District has fiduciary responsibilities to provide the best possible program for the least cost to the taxpayers and whereas the Northwoodby Park, whereas the Northwoodby Park and Recreation District has a responsibility to promote recreational opportunities and whereas the Northwoodby Park and Recreation District desires to facilitate the creation and the operation of competitive athletic programs which are of interest to members of the community. I mean, I, I guess that last sentence is where this resolution is of a problem with this sitting board, but I, I, I don't know why we're throwing away what has worked for 34 years, but I think we are going to see after some of the actions taken over the last couple of months, including the inevitable rescension of this resolution here, I, I think we're going to see for one of the first times in the history of this pool that it's going to be closed and I don't know for how long. The director was quoted in the newspaper saying that the pool wouldn't close if the levy didn't pass. The rest of what he said didn't follow. So if the November levy doesn't pass, maybe we can scrap up enough money to stay open until February, the next ballot opportunity, but after that, the pool will close. And I would assume the director is willing to go on the record and say such, it's inevitable. So that's pretty much all I had, I just, I don't know why we're going against what has worked for so long. You look across town, the voters built a $7 million football stadium for 50 kids to use. You look at the bargain that we're getting with NWAQ and it, it's so much, so much less, much less, so much so that the director feels that NWAC has made a profit, and I just, if, if, if the purpose of rescinding this resolution is to go after NWAC, I don't understand. So, if there's any, any thoughts there, I'd like to, like to hear, if not, it's fine.
It hasn't been successful for 30 years, for the last however many years, four or five, we have been in a downward spiral, we don't have the money that we need to buy a new boiler, and all the things that we need to do to fix the roof and the windows and all those things, and we need to find that money from somewhere, and we're bleeding money through NWAC, in my opinion, and it just depends, just a minute, it just depends on how you look at the numbers, and it's like, I disagree completely with the executive director, who, yes, we, we did hire him for his business acumen, but it's like, I really believe that he's wrong in taking the swimming, the swimming coach, who only, only, the only thing he does is NWAC, that salary is an NWAC expense directly, completely, it is not an expense of any of the other programs, and we are leaking money, and we were not positive last year, we never paid back the, the money we were supposed to pay back, we were not in the black, because we did not pay back money that was promised to be paid back. Yes, Commissioner Ford?
Yeah, sorry, I just raised my hand, so.
I can see it.
Okay, so, I, prior to this 2016, black or not black, great fact, reserve or not, that we lost probably, I think I summarized about $200,000 in the previous five years before that, which had to come from somewhere, that's, I didn't quite understand where it came from, it must've come from our reserve account over the years, so now, instead of having this 250,000, which we would have if we, including what we have now, in reserve, we have, we kind of are marginally trying to build it up, but we've got, we've put off, we have so many maintenance issues that could eat away entirely what we have in the reserve now, and we could've had a reserve that would've paid for that, we talked about the, the, they built a, the taxpayers built a, a football field, well, the taxpayers built the swimming pool, and the, actually, when, when they built it, the implication was it was gonna be self-supporting, that probably was not reasonable, but it's gone from being, initially, I think the initial levy was $100,000, and it's going up to about, it's gonna be probably $600,000 in 2018, you know, it's been a slow creep of increasing the amount that we're charging the taxpayers from M and O levy over the years from, what it was from the, or 100,000, maybe it was a third of the budget, to now it's 57% of the budget in 2016, I, that's where the taxpayers are having a problem, they don't mind, they built the pool with the understanding that it would be more or less self-sufficient, and that wasn't probably reasonable, but I'm, I'm a 50/50 person, I think if they built the pool, we should be able to pay 50% of the cost from programs and user fees, more or less, and not keep going up and up and up, and so we need to limit our expenses and not keep asking the taxpayers to pay more and more. Thank you.
Sorry, no, no comments, no comments from the backside, sorry. Okay, it's been moved and seconded, you had your time.
Can I have one last thing on it?
Oh, yes.
Thank, I just, again, I just wanted to reiterate the fact that this was in place two years before the last maintenance and operations levy, which passed by 50, by 64%, and, you know, I think, lastly, I think this is a, a life lesson here for everybody to witness, I think irrelevant to the executive director's numbers, the board is out to snuff out a perceived $45,000 debit, and what you are gonna see in return is a board that costs the district a $585,000 credit, so, it is what it is, I, I don't know what else to say, but, that, that, that's my prediction, so the newspaper likes headlines, that's my prediction, the pool will be closed by March of 2018.
I'm gonna answer that because you specifically said that, do you remember last year, or it was the year before when we raised prices, did we raise them last summer or the summer before? We raised it last summer, and you stood up in a meeting before you were a commissioner, and you said, no one, if you raise the prices that much, nobody's gonna come to the pool.
We've seen attendance hit hard.
You said attendance?
We've seen attendance hit hard.
Let's look at last March and this March, everything's up except swim school, swim school's down, but that's because last March people were paying.
Look how far swim, swim school's down.
No, it's down because we were raising the prices for swim school in May, and we had announced it, and so people were buying their swim school tickets early, so that's why it's so down now, if you look, you still see plenty of little kids learning to swim in the pool, but they bought their tickets last year, so I just wanna remind you that your prognostication is not that great, and so I'm saying, I, here's what I think, and I hope so too, I hope I'm right.
How, how much has Oak Harbor grown in the last year though? We've added 5, 6,000 people and we've got 100 more people in a whole month?
No, can we, can we get, can we get back?
That's horrible, we're still down 20.
Back to, back to the point, so, all right, anyway, I just wanted to make sure you knew that, so, it's been moved and seconded that Resolution 0902 be rescinded, all those in favor signify, no, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Why in the hell do we have an executive director? Why the hell do we have an executive director, goddammit? Why do we have an executive director? Why? I don't get it, he has asked to give an input all night.
You're out of order.
Why do, why are we paying him? He, this is the fourth time he wants to interject and we won't let him, I don't get it, I, this is.
I'm willing to listen to what he has to say.
All right, go ahead.
It seems that lately my input doesn't mean anything, but that, that's just, that's an opening editorial, when you all hired me, and two of you were part of the board that hired me, I told you, this was gonna take time to turn this place around, it seems like we have this rush to turn it around right now, and we wanna get there, I told you, this was minimum three to five years, minimum three to five years, to get the places where we, to get the place where we wanna be in here, I've said that to you guys on several occasions, it doesn't seem, the comment that we weren't in the black, even if I take the 13,000 out of there, we were still 7,000.
Is this, does this turn into this?
Yes.
Motion, okay, doesn't seem like it.
Well, Commissioner, you hear what you wanna hear, it's undone.
Okay, all those in favor of, it's been moved and seconded, Resolution 0902 will be rescinded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nay.
All those opposed, say nay, and the Chair votes aye, so we'll go by Commissioner Singleton?
Aye.
Commissioner Ford?
Aye.
Commissioner Hofmeyer?
Nay.
And Commissioner Holly votes aye, it is approved, three to one, the 0902 is rescinded. Okay, staff reports. Commissioner Singleton, do you have any questions?
I do, actually, so Kaz, the, there's a mention of sexual harassment, and I would add awareness, training, the, the original request was for sensitivity training, which I think included a little more diversity stuff, is it, is it narrowly focused, and, and I guess my request would be, if it is, can we look at supplementing that with something else?
They have both diversity and the sexual harassment training.
Okay.
And now, and I tested it on Joanne, and so now I can send everyone a link.
Did she pass?
No.
Okay.
I didn't either, but I, but I can send everyone, all the staff now, and I can send the commissioners a link to the same thing, and then you'll, you'll go through it, and, and then there'll be, for each class.
Okay, so there are two courses?
There are, well, there are more than two that could be appropriate, but there are a minimum of two that would be, would be applicable.
Okay, I just, I, it was, it was stated really, it was stated a little more narrowly than the request, so I just wanted to be sure that we were covering the, the, kinda the whole gamut, because I think they're all, when we, when we had the one from Enduris that was actually here, it was, I, I think it was pretty, it was pretty inclusive, and then I just had questions, I have a couple of questions, the, do we have a backlog for private lessons right now, or how are we doing on that?
A little bit of a backlog, it's based on instructor availability, a lot of the instructors are high school kids, so.
Okay, but we're getting through those and there aren't lots of, long waits.
As quickly as we can, get them on, yes.
Okay, sorry, I just, yeah, I know we haven't had in the recent past a problem with that, but we did previously, so I just wanted to find out about that, it sounds like the Shamrock Splash was cool, so.
They liked it, they liked it.
Yeah, that, so that's good. Question about the open records request, opened since February, is that, is that intended to be closed soon?
The volume of the requests is, is gonna take a long time.
Okay.
But, but the public request officer is working with the requister and, and setting the expectation on when to expect, and the, and the requister is okay with this.
Gotcha, okay, all right, and then I was just gonna add that it would be, it would probably be really helpful for us if we, if we put events, like even for these meetings, I know it certainly isn't the most exciting content in the world, but if we, on our Facebook page, if we created events for, both for special events and for our meetings, that would probably be a, a good way to communicate the goings-on with the public, and then I did notice that, and meaning that, that they're not real difficult to do, so it would just be maybe a good idea for us to utilize that, and then could potentially push people to that page, but also, I noticed there were a couple of reviews on there, and, and some actually have responses to them, but there were some, like, recent ones that don't, and one of them wasn't on how to determine, it might, it would be great if we were responding to the, the comments that people are putting on the page.
Do you, if you recall the comment, if you hit me offline, I can tell you, some of, it may have been taken care of via a personal conversation too.
From, from an outsider's perspective?
Yeah, I hear you.
Okay, then I, yeah, I'll stop there, yeah, and that, that was really, that was my only other addition, suggestion, okay, so, done, go.
So, I'd sent you an email that I'd received, and I think we all received from a lady with a complaint, I thought, I was assuming you were gonna address it here, but you haven't, have you, have you had a chance to address it with her?
I sent her an email asking her if she would please come in and talk with me about her complaint, I've not heard back from her.
Okay, thank you.
So, no.
Commissioner Hoffmer? The sexual harassment training is that, it says they're gonna have access, but it's like, so are we encouraging people to take it, are we suggesting they take it?
No, not suggesting, it's required, it's required, I'm requiring them to take it, so what, and, and when you, so you'll be given a code, like, basically it's a company code.
Right.
And you'll go in and you create your own login with an email and everything, and then you'll get emails until you take this stuff.
Okay.
So, it'll, it'll bug you until you take it.
And is it one of those, you can?
Yeah, you don't have to, you'll just keep getting emails until you.
No, 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 I mean, once you're in the training, is it a push the button, and you can push the button, I've had Navy training like that, and you don't, you don't have to pay attention?
No, no, you have to, yeah, you have to pay attention.
Well, we're expecting that people are gonna pay attention.
Yeah, you have to pay attention, it's, it's not, it's not, it's not hard, but you will have to pay attention, there are a couple of details in there.
Okay. I, the Shamrock Splash Open Swim sounded awesome, and did, was it, how was it advertised? Because I.
Facebook, on the website, and on the, and the front, and then the macaroni kids took it too, they take everything, we haven't agreed up with them.
What's the macaroni kids?
It's the lady that has connections with all the kids' groups, and she takes and basically shares fours and does stuff for us.
Okay, cute, and, thank you very much for the revenue layout on the Goldfish Swim, I appreciated that very much. Okay.
Next month we can see the Shamrock members.
And our employee of the month is Ryan Baxter, who is one of our lifeguards, and apparently he's gone into the water six times to save some of our swimmers, thank you, Ryan, and good job. Okay, no public comments, final board comments, Commissioner Hofmeyer?
Yeah, real quick on the little discussion that you and I had a while back about maybe some of my predictions being wrong, you know, I think that, I think that maybe, maybe the math to show that, that the numbers were wrong, I, I certainly don't think the whole year reflects that, that said, I'm moving past that, onto the levy thing, and what you said there, I, I hope that my projection's wrong, I mean, if I'm given the opportunity to stand on a street corner with a sign, I will, you know, if I'm asked to be at a booth at one of the, you know, the music festival or Holland Happening, or something representing the district, I will, if they want me to doorbell, I will, I will, I will work my ass off to be wrong, and I really, really hope I'm wrong, and I, I hope that all five of the board members can do everything within their power to get the levy to pass, and other than that, you know, I know, I know tonight was rather contentious, I told Doc earlier in the week, I don't take none of this personal, I know some people might, I hope they don't, and to the members of the community, I wish there was more that I could do, and, you know, I, I don't think it's over yet, I think, like, like Wendy said earlier, hopefully some good can come of this and the swimming club will continue, and that's really all I have right now, other than it's exciting to see the maintenance plan.
Thank you, Commissioner Ford?
No, no comments.
Commissioner Singleton? Mine's a question, I just, something that Commissioner Hofmeyer said, Holland Happening, what are we doing?
We have a booth.
We do have a booth, do you want some commissioners showing up?
Let me, let me check with Julie, I don't know what, what her booth schedule is, but I mean.
Why don't you find out, and then?
Well, she's here.
She's ignoring you.
You can just let us know.
Yeah, send, why don't you, send an email to the commissioners and say, here's when we're gonna be at, if you wanna come, you know, give us some times to show up, if, whatever.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Next meeting is Tuesday.
It's actually next week.
I know, next week, April 20, or, sorry, Wednesday, April 26th at 6:30, then the one after that will be Wednesday, May 3rd at 6:00 PM, and then the next regular meeting is Thursday, May 25th at 6:30 PM, all of these are scheduled to be in our normal.
April 23rd, you said?
Yes, sir.
We'll be back.
And I will, I'll send an email tomorrow with all the dates and stuff that you're, all your to-dos.
Thank you, of course.
If you don't agree with anything.
Thank you.
It's April 26th, I say. All right, um, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion, we adjourn.
It's been moved and seconded, we adjourn, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair agrees unanimously to decision, meeting is.
At.
Oh, sorry, thank you, at 8:22.
Are these their tables and chairs, they didn't pick them out? Yeah, so, the chairs go, you can, they're big, there are big and middle table, six to the big, four to the little, and the tables going to.